Process of evaluation and ultimate selection. We really don't want to put a lot of pressure on our transition time. And most definitely, we don't want to be in a position where we have to, heaven forbid, extend our existing contracts. So it's really important for us to get this process, if you will, out into the hands of industry. There's, like I said, there's been a number of changes. A number of things have been discussed and evaluated. And I really feel that there's really been an extraordinary amount of effort put on this that I think it deserves. And so I bring many an RFP through the process. And because of the nature of this one, the size, the complexity, et cetera, I believe that the city really has spent the necessary time and effort in getting the RFP right for issuance. And so with that, what I'd like to do is just open it up to whatever questions you may have, if that's the chair's wish.
Great. Thank you very much. And I do want to thank you, along with staff, for working on this. Certainly, we've come a long way since we originally outsourced IT services. The industry has evolved quite a bit, and I know that that's reflected in this document, especially splitting up aspects of the service. And so I've been very impressed by the outcome of this and seeing this document come together. So with that, do we have any questions from my colleagues? We are using speaker management. And I will also, just for the record, I know there was some interest in the labor peace agreement. Could you just discuss that aspect of this?
Yes. Labor peace is a statute that was invoked or put together by the city in 2007. It seeks on certain appropriate contracts over $250,000 to ensure that there's collective bargaining by the companies that would be awarded towards any given contract. That was evaluated by the PRC and determined not to be appropriate for this particular contract. One of the biggest challenges with that sort of agreement, the IT industry is traditionally non-union. We feel that that will limit the potential suppliers that would come forward based on that. And then there were a number of other points. If you'd like, I do have the document that was drawn up by the PRC with their rationale, if you'd like me to go through that with you.
I think that's a great explanation of it. And I do not see any further discussion or any questions from my colleagues. I would like to say that we would like to see as many vendors as possible respond to this. It's very important that we have a wide range of proposals coming from the industry for all pieces of this contract. So seeing no further discussion, I will move that we issue this RFP. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Dahl. And with that, I turn it back to Vice President Glenn.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Councilmember Johnson, and thank you to Mr. Dahl. And our second item for discussion is a review of how the process we have undergone to date regarding setting of the city's 2014 goals and strategic directions. As we talked about, I can't remember if it was last cycle or the cycle before, we had a presentation in this committee about the process we were undertaking to adopt those goals. And we now have a set of draft goals for presentation. And I'm assuming Mr. Austin is going to. I'm just waiting for you. I'm spinning here, spinning. Mr. Austin, if you'd like to take it away, please.
You bet. Thank you, Madam Chair. This will be a tag team between Jay and myself. While this is coming up, first of all, the PowerPoint we're bringing up is the same as the document that you have in front of you. I just would like to very publicly thank all of you and all of the team in the coordinator's office and all of the teams across all the departments that have worked on all this through, up to this point. It's been quite an undertaking, and it's been a good conversation, leading to an even greater conversation over the next month. In front of you, you've got a proposed draft of vision, values, goals, and strategic directions. I'm going to take the first few slides out of this deck, and then Jay will walk through the others. Just as a reminder of how we got here, back in, both back in October and then on January's 3rd and 7th, there were conversations with the department leadership across the city about the issues and items and directions and focal points that were on the department's minds from their specific perspectives as experts in given areas of the city, as well as representatives of city leadership overall. We had a gathering with the system partners, which includes those outside entities that work very closely with the city, like the school board and some of the major foundations and the downtown council and a range of folks, to again, get their temperature on what did they see as the challenges, what did they see as directions, what kinds of ideas should the city be thinking about as it's thinking about its next course over a one-to-two-to-four year period. We obviously have had an orientation process that's gone on through December and January with the new elected officials. A number of the veteran electors have also participated, as well as all the departments across the city and their senior leadership. We've also had a series of individual visits with Jay and his team, visiting with a lot of you and other folks, just to get some individual feedback, some individual insights. And this was all kind of wrapped together, you know, February 3rd and 4th, where we had our collective gatherings, both the council itself and then the council plus department leadership. And then there's been a series of feedback visits, looking at the product that came out of there. I think one thing that's important to remember about any kind of a visioning and valuing and strategic direction statement is there's a couple of things in play at once. One is it's a time and a place capturing of kind of intent and goals. And a piece of this that I have found interesting to watch and has been interesting to watch play out, there's been a lot of consensus on what we ought to aim at. And the real work has been in trying to figure out how to find the right words that speak to each of us in a way that we can identify with it, and that everyone thinks the people who live and work and play in the city can identify with it. And that's part of the reason we're here today, is to kick off kind of a next phase in that conversation. The draft vision statement that we have simply says that Minneapolis is a growing and vibrant world-class city with a flourishing economy and a pristine environment where all people are safe, healthy, and have equitable opportunities for success and happiness. That's our starting point at this point. And it's seen a lot of work to get there, but I think compared to some of the really long descriptions we had when we started, this is a nice synopsis of where people are and the things that we want to have on the forefront in front of people as they think about the city. When we look at the values that are being proposed, it was interesting, again, in the conversation to note that we kind of ended up with two piles. And this happened to big zones. And this happened in each one of the conversations, this notion of we will be a city of, and then we will work by. And I think in the past, I think back to the time 25 years ago when I was at the Met Council and they did some of this work, they tended to do one of these two zones only in their description of who they are. But it's real obvious when you look at an organization, there's actually at least what we want to do and how we're going to do it as ways to describe the organization. So I think this is nice, and it's a good way to set it up. I'd also like to point out that we had a chance to chat a little bit with Jane Miller at the Park Board. And independently, they have these two zones that they're working on as they work on their vision and strategy. So I think that's very helpful. This notion that Minneapolis will be a city of equity, a city of safety, a city of health, a city of vitality, a city of connectedness, and a city of growth are really wonderful ways to describe where we want to go and what we intend to get to. And then this notion of we're going to do this, and so we can use these kinds of values as cross-checks on our work and on proposals and ideas that come forward in the city. We're going to do it by being innovative and creative and by driving toward results, by engaging the community, by showing employees that they are valued. And I don't think you can underestimate the value of having this statement so boldly placed at the front end of the description. The last decade has been a hard decade on the public sector, and it's a time we say thank you to everyone who's been doing this hard work, and this is a part of saying thank you. Building public trust, at the end of the day, this might be the most important thing. This notion that the government is acting in the best interest of its residents, citizens, people it interacts with, and then collaborating. Obviously, no one gets anything done alone. So those are the high-line values that we're proposing, that we think about using to guide the work in a broad sense, to use as decision tools, to use as sounding boards, particularly as you're moving from that implementation to the policy conversation. Because that's where the interface sometimes gets a little bit harder to manage. And with that, I will turn it over to Jay Strobel, and he'll talk more specifically about our goals and how some of those break into strategic directions, which are, by definition, more directional and more narrowly defined.
Morning, Chair Glenn, members of the committee. My name is Jay Strobel, Deputy City Coordinator in the City Coordinator's Office. I'm just going to spend a few minutes walking through the goals, not in detail, but sort of summarizing each of the goal areas, and then spending a couple moments on next steps. The first goal, living well, or the livability goal, is focused both on the core tenants of any city, safety, health, housing, transportation, while also calling out attention to what makes Minneapolis stand apart from other cities, its unique neighborhoods, and the energy and vitality derived from its arts, culture, and recreational opportunities. The second goal, One Minneapolis, or our people-focused goal, very decisively calls out our aspiration to address and eliminate racial inequities, so all people have equitable opportunities for success. Additionally, this goal addresses our value and our interest of having an engaged community. Our third goal, around the hub of economic activity and innovation, or the business goal, is focused on supporting businesses of any size to stay, move, grow, start, and thrive here by highlighting the need to continue developing the workforce of today and tomorrow, leveraging our sector strengths while also being conscious of supporting entrepreneurs and having a regulatory environment and an infrastructure that enables business growth. The fourth goal, our great places goal, is focused on the related outcomes of both, identifying how our natural and built environment can work together, working well together, while also seeking to address our environmental aspirations as well, to reduce our consumption, to minimize our waste, to use less energy, while also protecting and restoring our air, water, and land. We seek to be thoughtful. In addition to that, we also seek to be thoughtful in planning and designing our future to create a sense of place while welcoming a growing and diversifying population. Finally, our fifth goal, City That Works, is largely focused on how we want to operate as an organization, emphasizing the need, as Paul just alluded to, to empower and support our talented employees, forming partnerships both inside and outside the organization, establishing public trust, being good stewards of the public dollar, and working efficiently and effectively to achieve the results that we've just discussed in the five goals and the values. In terms of next steps, I have a couple of slides. First and foremost, today, we're presenting the draft vision, values, goals, and strategic directions to the Committee of the Whole. This will kick off a public comment period between February 19th and March 14th, where this information is going to be posted on our website. And we're going to provide three modes for public comment. My understanding is that some councilmembers are planning board conversations where these can be discussed. In addition to that, we're going to be having a public hearing at Committee of the Whole on March 5th. And then finally, this information is going to be posted on our website, and people are going to be able to provide email feedback. And this information is both going to be linked on the city's main page, and we're going to be working with 311 of having a button on the 311 app to advertise it as well. Then finally, following the public comment closing period on March 14th, we're going to be working with the elected leadership of the city and the department leadership to work towards a final draft to get approval on March 26th. Once this work is adopted on March 26th, I just want to borrow an analogy that Councilmember Reich used during our discussion the last couple of weeks. He really talked about the vision, the values, and the goals, really setting the compass for what we want to accomplish, what we want to achieve. And then the work that's going to follow is really our blueprint, the strategies for how we're going to do that. And that's going to come in two forms. One, it's going to come in identifying specific strategies with our partners around our strategic directions and identifying community indicators of measuring our progress. And two, through the work of the department business plans, they're going to be identifying aligned goals, objectives, and tactics, as well as programmatic performance measures to measure our progress. This work will happen following the adoption on March 26th. So with that, if there's any questions from the committee, Paul and I, City Coordinator Austin and I are prepared to answer.
Well, I wanted to say thank you very much to you and to Mr. Austin and the entire team from the coordinator's office that helped facilitate, I know, a lot of work. And so I want to say thank you very much for that. And I know that it is not easy to gather input from a lot of strong-willed and minded people, which is not just the elected officials, but that you also did, I think, a great process with our department heads and involving their perspective as well, because it's going to be important that we have a vision that we can agree on together and that we can all be champions of that vision. So we do have a question or comment from Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just, Mr. Strobel, under One Minneapolis, on the goals, disparities are eliminated. And, you know, I think sometimes I remember our last, I can't remember if it was our goals or, you know, we get these kind of blanket statements. And even our Downtown 2025 Plan, I think, was the last one that did this, to say, you know, we're going to eliminate homelessness. And it's an unreachable goal. And I just think sometimes we set ourselves up for criticism, failure, if we don't eliminate disparities. And I can't imagine in four years that we are going to eliminate disparities in this city. It's just not realistic. So I think there, and my colleagues may disagree with me, but I just think that that's setting us up for criticism. The other thing I want to add, and it's something that my constituents have identified, that in the "all people will have access to quality essentials such as housing, education, food, childcare, and transportation," if there is a word or a couple of words that could describe a successful commercial community too, one of the things that people in North Minneapolis talk about is, you know, when we do surveys, they want more restaurants, they want more places to shop and retail. And I guess that, I'd like to figure out a way to just get that into the mix, too. So, thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. And this is something I really enjoy doing with the council. This is the third time I've gotten to do this. I think this goal-setting and strategic directions is really important. It's really healthy for us. As much as the end product, I actually think it serves a really great purpose that we get to know one another. I also really appreciated the opportunity to interact with leaders and the staff for one of the strategic planning sessions. I thought that was incredibly valuable and that we gained more in just understanding one another and laying the groundwork for working together, which I thought was great. I do have a couple of comments about the goals that I also wanted to make. I'll just respond to the Council President who mentioned the issue about the disparities are eliminated. I think, in a sense, it might look like what we're saying is 100% of every single disparity ever will be eliminated, but we're really just saying disparities are eliminated, and we're not actually saying all disparities even. So that's an aspiration, just like when we say Minneapolis is safe. Well, we're not going to say that there's never going to be anyone hurt here, but that's going to be, it's aspirational, but I also think it's realistic because we're not absolutely quantifying the whole. So I'm comfortable with it, but I can appreciate that, and I just wanted to kind of give that angle on it. Maybe that would increase the comfort level of others. I do like the idea of adding something about the quality essentials, access to the goods and services we need, or some commercial aspect. The one thing that's still bothering me a little, and before I talk about it, I will say that I can find somewhere to put this in with these goals and values, I can probably live with them as they are. But I think partly the way we framed it, the way we looked at it, we left off something that, to me, is a big priority and goal at this time. And we got there a little bit, I think, because we were thinking about what do we want our city to be for the people in the city, and how do we want to get there? And I think that we didn't think about what obligation do we think we have as a city to help get our region and our country and our planet somewhere? Because I think one of the most critical things we need to be working on in the area, it is protecting our resources, and it is a sustainable future, but really, it's because we want to address this critical problem of climate change that's going to first probably impact the people on coastlines that we don't even see every day, and it's going to have this bigger impact, although we're feeling it all the time with climate change now. And we passed a fabulous climate action plan. I think clearly, we were acting last year like this is a major priority for the city, and we have been for a while. It got called out a little more, I think, in our previous goals, when we wanted to be an international leader for sustainability, I guess. So I know that it's in here, and I can find it in different places, and I know whatever's in here, I can still keep working on what I want to. But I just wish there was a way we could raise that up. I actually think if we're the number-one city, or we're the top city for addressing climate change issues, we are going to attract innovative and creative people. This is going to be a place where people want to live. Our economy's going to be thriving, and we're going to be reaching all these other goals, too. And I wish there was a way to maybe raise that up a little bit more in our goals, and that's what I wanted to say. Thanks. One more thing, if I may. I'm actually going to be holding one of these board conversations on Saturday at Augsburg College on the city goals, and I can give out more details on that, too, but I think that it's a great opportunity and a great idea that we've drafted the goals, and now we're going to give ourselves over a month so we can have some conversations. And I hope other councilmembers will do that, too. But everybody from the whole city is invited to come. 9:30 at Augsburg College. Contact me for more information.
All right. We have, I'll just let you know, we have a lineup of councilmembers, which just shows that, I mean, this was a very engaged discussion. It's a lot to find agreement on something, and we may not be completely there, and this is the public part of our discussion. So, Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would reiterate, or second what Councilmember Gordon said about climate change, I think that's an important aspect to have in the goals. I also think when it comes to our values, it would be a mistake not to include something about our city being green and nature. I mean, we are the city of lakes, meet Minneapolis, our slogan is "City by Nature." We have a world-class park system, and virtually everyone I know, one of the things that they say they value about our city is the abundance of nature, its connectedness with it, the lakes, the river, just how environmental we are in the city. And so I'm hoping we can fit that in there. I know something we talked about was maybe combining some of these words, such as green and healthy, equity and opportunity, growth and vitality, things like that, where there's some good pairings there, but that we can also recognize green. I think it is at the core what Minneapolis is and who we are and what our values are. Thank you.
Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to push back on Councilmember Gordon, not to be harsh, but, you know, if you look at Minneapolis is safe and livable, nowhere in there do we say we're going to eliminate all crime. But under One Minneapolis, disparities are eliminated, so all Minneapolis residents can participate and prosper. We say racial inequities, including housing, education, income, and health are addressed and eliminated. There is no way we are going to eliminate, I'm not even getting into education, that's not our responsibility, but health, there is no way we are going to eliminate the disparities in health in four years. That's a generational challenge. And so it is, we need to be real with people. And I think one of the things that we want to do as city councilmembers is influence a lot of things that are beyond our purview. We have a role in, let's see, in housing. We have a role in education, but only, only, peripherally. Income, we have a role, we're lobbying for an increase in the minimum wage. You know, we try to pay our employees in a reasonable fashion. But health, our health department does outreach work and education and support for some clinics. And so we are not in any of those frames. We just had a report on housing. There is no way that we're going to deal with the housing problems that have just been identified by both the Metropolitan Council, by Myron Orfield, in four years. It's just, it is so unrealistic. And so I want us to be real about what we're seeing. We have power to address and influence, but we do not have the ability to eliminate.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Connell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have a quick question. Is there a reason why, I guess, the point on equity under values is just equity versus racial equity? Was there a conversation about that, or what's the difference? I'm sorry if we already covered this.
Mr. Strobel, and I will say, I think others have asked this question, but Mr. Strobel, why don't you address that, as you were the one who, through your team, kind of took all of the comments, so.
Sure. Chair Glenn, Councilmember Connell, there's no question, during the course of the last several weeks, several months, there's been a lot of conversation regarding equity, and should we define it more broadly, or should we define it specific to racial equity? At this point, I think that there is great interest on behalf of equity beyond just the racial equity. I know that's a particular focus of some of the current city work. I also, my understanding is that Councilmember Glenn and others are looking for further definitions around issues around equity and racial equity. And hopefully, through some of that conversation, we will, if we do want a specific focus on racial equity within the vision, the values, and the goals, we can move to that point. But during the course of the last several months, there's been enough interest in equity beyond just racial equity. So we are most comfortable having a value more broadly in equity.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will note that under One Minneapolis, it says directly racial inequities, including housing, education, income, and health are addressed and eliminated. So it's in here. So I just want to point that out. I wanted to say that there are a lot of things that are not in here that I think are important. And so if we start calling out climate change, let's call out affordable housing, we'll just pick my key issue, or historic preservation, or the way we deal with seniors, or living wage. We don't address any of those things in this, because it's all this touchy-feely, language-y type stuff that doesn't really talk about any specifics. So we have to go in one direction or another. My understanding of the way Mr. Strobel, Mr. Austin approached this was to not get into the specific buzzwords, but put out there the big language. And I guess I can live with that if it's consistent, and it seems to be consistent right now. But if we start adding everyone's pet word or project in here, then we're not going to have this kind of broad-based approach. We're going to start talking about specifics, and then I have a whole list. I just mentioned them right now. So I think we have to go one way or the other. Add climate change, add living wage jobs, add historic preservation, add how we deal with seniors, add all of those things. They're important, but it's going to be a very different document than the document we have right now. And I do think that one of the things I can agree with in this is that everyone's issue is not specifically addressed, but these are overriding concepts. And I think we have to pick one or the other. I'll support whichever way you want to go, but I don't think that right now, we should be ticking off a list like we're in a strategic planning session of all the things that aren't in here. There's tons of things that are not in here. We're just trying to figure out. just trying to figure out what the bigger picture sounds like.
Chair Glynn. Yes, Mr. Strobel.
Chair Glynn, Councilmember Goodman, excellent point. Going back to analogy of the compass and the blueprint, we very intentionally created the goals and strategic directions at kind of that umbrella level. The next work of defining the blueprint, defining the strategies, will allow us that room to get into some of those more specifics that we know that people are very interested and committed to, and that we think are critical to the achievement of the goals and the strategic directions, and ultimately, the vision.
Thank you, Mr. Strobel. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Goodman said. And I do want to say this, though, that the City Coordinator's Office and all the folks involved in this process, you all did an awesome job. And I'm sure, you know, I mean, I understand that you all are not going to make everyone happy. But for the amount of work that you did, and for the amount of folks that you brought to the table to, you know, have this discussion and get to where we are, just awesome job. So thank you very much.
Okay. Well, I'm not seeing any other comments, and I think those are great comments to end on, because I really very much agree that you, again, have done a very difficult job, and this is about finding someplace of agreement. And at this point now, we are inviting some comment from the public. We are putting this document out there publicly. But I think, I will just say, what I am anticipating, and I could be wrong, is going to be most interesting to folks is, meaning residents and people who are very engaged in thinking about the future of the city, is going to be how we really follow up on these goals, how we have a process for tracking, what is our progress on these goals, and then how we start to adopt some strategic visions around the goals, meaning what are the policies and the programs and other types of things, and our budget decisions that will really effectuate the goals. So thank you again very much. And I believe with that, are we receiving and filing this document? So we will receive and file. I'll move to receive and file. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And that item is then approved. And we are done with our discussion agenda. Next, we are going to turn to the reports of committees. And the first committee is the Executive Committee, and I believe it's Council President Johnson. Are you giving that report?
Oh, okay, I can. Your's not here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Executive Committee approved two new reapportments, or two new appointed positions, Deputy Director of Public Works and the Director of Assessments in Public Works. Both of these positions are newly evaluated and have incumbents in them. And so the financial cost is pretty minimal in these appointed positions. Then we have the appointment of the charter department heads, and Mayor Hodges' nomination to reappoint the following charter department heads for two-year terms, Patrick Todd to the City Assessor, Susan Segal to the City Attorney, Velma Corbell to the appointed position of Director of Civil Rights, John Friedel to the Chief of the Fire Department, Gretchen Musikant to the Commissioner of Health, Director of Health, and Stephen Cockey to the appointed position of City Engineer, Director of Public Works. And all of those were forwarded to the appropriate committee, were approved and forwarded to the appropriate committee for public hearings. We also approved the two collective bargaining agreements. The first is an agreement with ASME Council Five, Local Nine, for a one-year contract in arrears, I guess you would say, and then a three-year contract. And then we have an agreement with the Minneapolis Building and Construction Trades Council, the Trade Inspector's Unit, for a two-year contract, January 1, 2014 to December 31, 2015. And they were approved and referred to the Ways and Means Committee.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the report from Community Development and Regulatory Services, with that committee's chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 14 items in front of us for approval tomorrow. Item number one is a land sale. Two and three are the revocation of rental licenses, one for Mahmoud Khan, and the second for Douglas Stoddy. Item number four and five are renewal of rental, reinstatement of rental licenses for Sri Investments and Miguel Morales Diaz. Item number six are our normal liquor, business, and gambling license applications. Item number seven are license settlement conference recommendations. Item number eight is the All-Star Game Clean Zone. That did bring a conversation in committee, and I'm happy to answer questions about that. Item nine is authorizing $330,000 for our Great Streets Facade Improvement Program matching grants. Item number 10 is amending and reinstating our tornado recovery spending plan. Item 11 is authorizing actions to allow us to issue our tax-exempt revenue bonds for 2014. Item number 12 is accepting grant funds from DED for environmental remediation for a number of projects listed below. And items 13 and 14 are the Marshall Terrace and Holland NRP Phase II Neighborhood Action Plans. I'm happy to stand for questions on any of the items on the agenda.
I'm not seeing any questions right now. I will note, I've received a couple of questions about the Clean Zone. I don't know if I really know enough particulars right now. I wonder if you want to say just a couple of words about the Clean Zone, because it seems to be inspiring some conversation and questions.
Right. I would be happy to do so, Madam Chair. The Clean Zone is an ordinance that we have been required to bring forward as a basis of Meet Minneapolis recruiting Major League Baseball to come here for the All-Star Game this summer. So as a part of the contract, we're required to provide an agreement that we will not issue temporary vending permits within the zone where the area of activity is happening. There are three areas of activity in the city, obviously surrounding the baseball stadium is one of them, surrounding the stadium at the university is another, and there's an area in north-northeast Minneapolis where there are some activities happening as well. Essentially, Major League Baseball wants a monopoly on stuff they sell. They don't want people coming in with kind of fake MLB memorabilia, like hats and shirts. And so these are temporary licenses. The reason it came up in committee is because a number of us were like, well, really, you can't have a food truck in that area? You can't do normal business that you normally do? Yes, you can. Permanent license holders operate as normal, so they should be able to benefit from this. This is banning the issuance of temporary permits specifically targeted at making money off of this event, but not being in these areas full-time. So I think people on the committee and others can speak up if they would like, felt comfortable with that. First of all, because we essentially have no choice. This is part and parcel of what happens when you have a large sports event in your community. But also, you can understand that you really want the people who are here year-round to benefit, not those that just come in to make money off of the game. So this involves, as I understand it, temporary permits. And I don't know that I could answer many more questions, but I'll try if they come up. And others on the committee that were around to discuss it should feel free to jump in as well.
Okay. I'm not seeing, oh, I saw one person jump in. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. And maybe this is a question that you can't answer, but it just occurred to me, as you were talking about temporary. One of the things that we have near the TCF University Football Stadium is an expansion of premises that people do for big events so that they can operate out, you know, they'll move a bar, and they'll serve food out on a parking lot that they'll close for a big event. Do you know if this will impinge on that or not?
Councilmember Goodman.
We think that they will be okay, but I think it would be worth asking Grant Wilson via email to answer your specific question. These are permanent license holders.
Right.
That are allowed under the ordinance to expand their premise up to 12 times per year, and they probably will choose to do it five times right in this window. But they're not temporary licenses like transient merchant licenses. That's really what they're trying to get at. But just to confirm, because we wouldn't want that to happen, obviously, either, because it really impedes a property owner's ability to use their property for a big event, which is supposed to be helping these people. That's like the whole point. It would be bad if that was part of it. So if you want to just, if you wouldn't mind asking Grant Wilson via email, just to assuage any remaining concern.
I will certainly do that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for that discussion. I'm not seeing any further questions. So we'll turn to the next report, which is from, oh, was there one more? Oh, next committee, which is Health, Environment, and Community Engagement. That committee's chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. The committee will be bringing seven items forward for approval. One is approving the appointment of Eduardo Cardenas from Ward Nine for a term on the Community Environmental Advisory Commission, to expire in December. The second is to approve reapportments for the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on People with Disabilities, Harvey Hoffman, Kenneth Rogers, Amanda Temple, Terry Crake, and Aracilio Omar Magana, and Heather Lead, and these are all reapportments. The other is to authorize an issuance of a request for proposals for the One Minneapolis Fund, and authorize the Neighborhood and Community Engagement Commission to review the proposals for funding and make recommendations. The fourth is authorizing a very interesting biochar composting demonstration project. It's a memorandum of understanding with the Shakopee-Midwaketen Sioux Tribal Community for a biochar composting demonstration project. The fifth is a resolution urging action on the use of triclosan. The sixth is authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding with Healthy Housing Solutions, and accepting $22,500 to fulfill the services outlined in that MOU. And the last item is acceptance of $186,000 from Ucare for the operations of our Ucare Skyway Senior Center. And I can stand for questions on any of those. We did have some very interesting discussions on the biochar, also a great presentation at the committee on the One Minneapolis Fund.
All right. Thank you very much. I am not seeing any questions. And the next report is Intergovernmental Relations, and I will give that report. We had two items. The first was to approve two amendments to our 2014 state legislative agenda, and they were to support increased state funding for the State Solid Waste Block Grant Program, which is more popularly known as SCORE. And we had a good discussion with Commissioner Peter McLaughlin about composting, and about the SCORE program, and about how to move this item forward strategically. We also are supporting providing cities of the first class with limited authority to impose reasonable restrictions on the use of pesticides, and require non-agricultural pesticides sold in Minnesota to indicate if they are pollinator-friendly. And so this is impacting a lot of issues around the bee community, pollinator community, that I know many of our residents and councilmembers are very interested in. And this was moved by Councilmember Johnson. And then finally, we have a resolution, which is an additional item supporting our already-approved amendment to our state legislative agenda on the state minimum wage. And this was a resolution joining a coalition that is working to increase the state minimum wage. And those are the items. And we have one question from Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just a clerical piece for the legislation that would impose reasonable restrictions on the use of pesticides. We actually removed the word "non-agricultural" from this, and that was a part of the motion itself that we passed at IGR. So I think it just needs to be updated in this particular report.
Okay. So thank you for that. And we'll ask the clerk's office to update our documents so that at Friday's meeting, we'll be making sure that we have the correct language. Thank you very much for that. Next, we have the report of the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee, with that committee's chair, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have three items for approval tomorrow, or Friday. The first item is to authorize staff participation. That's 911 in finalization of cooperative agreement for shared hosted system as an alternative to individual purchase of a system. And also, to begin contract negotiations with selected vendors for that specific final configuration. Two is to authorize amendment and extension of a contract for office space at 314 Clifton Avenue to a three-year lease agreement for the Police Department's Employee Assistance Program. And the last one is to authorize contract with the cell, and I'm going to do the acronym real quick, Counterterrorism Education Learning Lab, for the development of a community awareness program with a customized training program and training video tailored for the Minneapolis community. And the cost of that is $197,000, of which $100,000 will be reimbursed from the 2013 Urban Area Security Initiative grant. And the second is going to be subsidized by the cell itself. And the other part is a grant waiver to allow upfronts payment by the Police Department of $100,000.
All right. Thank you very much for that report. Next, we have Transportation and Public Works, with that committee's chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Transportation and Public Works Committee forwards nine items. Item one regards the borough's North Area Dupont Avenue South Street Reservicing Project. Item two is the Johnson Street Northeast, 10th and 11th Avenue Southeast Street Reservicing Project. Item three regards the Franklin Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation. Item four is the Washington Avenue Reconstruction Project. Following items are referred reports to Ways and Means Committee. Item five, the Tolts-King-Duvall-Anderson, otherwise known as TKDA, Contract Amendment. That'll prove an extension of that contract. Item six is the 2014 Downtown Minneapolis TMO Grant Agreements and the actions to support that. Item seven regards the Federal Courthouse Ramp Parking Control and Security Automation Project, approval of funds for that project. And item eight is a Government Center Ramp Expansion Joint Project. And then the final items are accepting low bids from people who provide services to the department.
Thank you very much for that report. And next, we have Ways and Means with Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Vice President Glynn. Ways and Means will be bringing forward six items for your consideration on Friday. The first are two settlements of legal matters against, with individuals against the city. And there are two special assessment settlements that'll be for your consideration. Second item will be the confirming the mayoral appointment of Catherine Bishop to the Minneapolis Television Board. The third item is the acceptance of a low bid for Huffcor Minnesota to furnish and deliver services for operable wall practitioners at the Convention Center. We've authorized a request for proposal for professional IT services to upgrade the Compass Financial System. The fifth and sixth items were both explained a little bit by Council President Johnson from the Executive Committee. They were approval of two new appointed positions, and passage of agreements, collective bargaining agreements with the Trades Unit and ASME Local Nine. Happy to stand for any questions.
Great. Thank you very much for that report. Not seeing any questions. So we will turn to our final report from the Zoning and Planning Committee Chair, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have 12 items to forward. The first is a reappointment of Ryan Kronzer to represent the City Council on the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. The second item is an appeal of a certificate of appropriateness application to replace windows and a door on a property on the Healy Block Historic District. The address is 3112 Third Avenue South. And the applicant in this case is actually our City Health Department, which is administering lead abatement grant from HUD for a low-income family whose child suffered lead poisoning. The next three items, items three, four, and five, we actually had quite a bit of discussion, as well as about an hour of public testimony. These are three properties in Dinkytown. And there are three separate applications to demolish an historic resource. The committee voted to deny the appeal of one of the properties, 1319 Fourth Street Southeast, and approve the demolition of two properties, 1315 Fourth Street Southeast and 410 13 Avenue Southeast. The sixth item is related to the Target Field Station Street Vacation Resolution 2013R-52, and this is just clarifying the language in a previously approved motion. The seventh is a series of art commission appointments from the City Council and the mayor's office. The eighth item is the rezoning of 716 and 718 West 34th Street from R2B to C1. The ninth item is to approve a petition to rezone 400408 Lindale Avenue South for the Harriet's Restaurant to allow a parking lot there. So to rezone from R1 to C1. The 10th item, sorry, the 10th item is to approve a petition to rezone properties to rezone properties at 2600 and 2622 Central Avenue from C1 to C2. And the 11th item is approving a petition to rezone a property to add transitional parking to an R4 multifamily district at 2827 Williams Avenue Southeast. And the final and 12th item is to approve a petition on behalf of Northern Clay Center to rezone a property at 2424 Franklin Avenue East from R6 to C2, and to approve the resolution vacating a no-outlet alley.
Thank you very much. We do have some comments or questions from two councilmembers today. Councilmember Yang?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Bender, I just have a real quick question with regards to the seventh item. And that's in regards to the fifth ward mayoral appointment for the Minneapolis Arts Commission. I mean, we're granting residency requirements. And I'm wondering why that is. I mean, could we not find somebody from Ward Five? And why are we granting this waiver?
Thank you, Councilmember Yang. I actually don't know the answer. I do know that there was a process to interview members of this committee last year, and that there was a criteria that they wanted to fill related to expertise and demographic diversity. So they were seeking applicants to fill a series of needs that had been identified. And I don't know if anyone else here was part of that process last year, who could give any more details about that specific appointment. Otherwise, I can find out for you.
Thank you.
All right. And Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. I'm curious about number five. It's an issue that I've been concerned about. I did look at the HBC decision somewhat, and did a little research there. I'm mostly wondering if the findings have already been prepared, and if we could have an opportunity to see those before the meeting tomorrow would be very helpful. I notice they're not in the book. And I'm assuming that these are new findings that are going to have to be drafted, because the committee action was a little different than the HBC action.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Councilmember Gordon. So on, yeah, so certainly on the one, so the 1319 Fourth Street, which is item number three, is the one that the committee --
Oh, sorry.
Is that the one you're asking about?
I'm asking for the whole, the whole thing.
So there's one, one property where the committee overturned the, or upheld the HPC's recommendation. On the other two, as you're saying, the original staff recommendation had been to allow demolition. The HPC overturned that. So I can certainly get you the findings that staff have prepared for each of those three items. And let me know if that's not clear.
That is clear. And it would be great to see the findings. Probably it would be nice to have those available to all the councilmembers, I would imagine.
Right. And I just, I might have a question here, because I thought traditionally, we received an email to all councilmembers when there were findings that reflected the committee's decision that may have made a decision different than what was in the record before. And so I don't know if that's a question to our city attorney or to the clerk's office on how that is handled, because I don't know that Councilmember Bender would know how traditionally we've seen this.
I haven't received new findings yet, but we should be getting new findings from the city attorney.
So I think we're required to see those before we vote on this, unless I'm incorrect. And I've never served on this committee, so I may be, I may be incorrect for sure.
Madam Chair
Yes.
Councilmember Bender, there are two ways this has happened in the past. One, it's either over two cycles, where the council may grant an appeal and then direct staff to prepare findings, and then the findings are brought back to the council for consideration. I believe that Eric Nielsen is in the process of preparing findings, consistent with the committee's recommendation. I'm not sure if they're complete yet or not, but I assume they will be prior to Friday's, the council meeting this Friday.
Okay. And we do have Councilmember Goodman in queue, but I just didn't know if Councilmember Bender had a question or response today.
Yes, I just, so it sounds like findings are being drafted right now and will be sent out to everyone this afternoon. Thanks for the question.
Okay. So she's just received word. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to note that the Heritage Preservation Commission recommended to study all three buildings and had findings from that. So there is a basis for revised draft findings from the staff that's out there already. And then I want to note that for existing councilmembers, we're a day earlier than we're used to. We're used to meeting on Thursday and having it on Friday. So actually, that has proven to be a good thing. And there'll be extra time for people to see it. But I want to note, we're not designating these buildings historic. We're deciding whether or not to study designating them historic. And only one of the three that the HPC said study all three. So there is plenty of record on this. I think the packet, Councilmember Gordon, was like this thick. So I think there should be some good information out there, and just wanted to note that as well.
Thank you. And just for the public that is listening, the report that Councilmember Goodman referenced is already linked in public online, the decision of the HPC. Was there any final comment?
Just one final point of clarification. So the committee did adopt the CPED staff findings for the two properties, 1315 and 410. And then the new findings are being prepared right now for 1319, and those will be sent out this afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. I have one announcement, which is that after our council, wait a minute here. Okay, so we just, we have, we say January 21st, but I think it's February 21st. That threw me off here. After our council meeting on this Friday, we will adjourn to Room 315 to consider two legal matters. And with that, I believe that we are done with our business, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.